I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the provisions of the Public Safety Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and revised agenda for this meeting was posted on July 25th, 2016 at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florence, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. And a motion to accept this agenda is...
I would like to accept the agenda.
Thank you. 1005. This is all set.
It's Mr. Brown.
All right, it's contagious.
There you go. Ms. Harge.
Hi.
Dr. Graves.
Hi.
Secretary of State, Ms. Onset.
Hi.
And Dr. Burnham.
Hi, hi. I'm so glad everybody's here tonight, and we're going to start off with introductions by Dr. Davis.
So, good evening, Board. Thank you so much for this opportunity. This will be for information. I thought it would be really important. We've done a reorganization back in February of 2016. I have had a pretty intense hiring process throughout these last six months, and I thought it would be fitting to bring before you the people that you have hired to help lead this district forward. And I'm really excited about the strong team of people that we have and that I'll bring before you tonight. I have quite a few, and so I'll try to get through this in sort of groups. And I'll go ahead and start. And so I'm going to be calling your names and talking a little bit about most of the people who I'll introduce tonight. And while doing this, I would ask that the groups come. I'll sort of preface the comments so that you know when to come. If I'd like me to come, I can stand on my left or right. Either one is fine, because I'd like the Board to see you and the community as well. I think we have some really exciting people who bring a wealth of knowledge and will be able to help do the great work that we're going to do, already are, and will continue to do for the children of Ferguson, Florence School District. So at this time, I would like to introduce new members of our team. Among the new positions, we have three, is the position of the Instructional Support Leader. We will have an ISL at each one of our elementary schools. The ISL will support teachers with best practices while also working in cooperation with the principal and the Assistant Principal at the school to make the best practices becoming our next practice in every classroom, and so that those practices become common in every classroom. So I'm excited to introduce the following people. When I call your name, please come forward and stand with me. We'll start with the ISL who will be at Airport Elementary School, Ms. Stephanie Calcary. And if you would just hold your applause until I get everyone up for each group. We will have at Bermuda Elementary School, Ms. Erica Booker. Our ISL at Central Elementary School will be Amber Spencer. Our ISL at Combs Elementary School will be Lori Samuelman. Our ISL at Commons Lane will be Christie Brooks. The ISL at Coop Valley will be Tiffany Blackman. Our ISL at Griffith Elementary School will be Shamika Green. Our ISL at Hall's Ferry will be Lauren Rebert. Our ISL at Johnson-Wabash Elementary School will be Dr. Victoria Cassidy. At Lee Hamilton, our ISL will be Ms. Pamela Burrows. Our ISL at Parker Road Elementary School will be Ms. Chanel Higgins. Our ISL at Robinwood Elementary School will be Ms. Jacqueline Munier. And our ISL at Oak Elementary School will be Ms. Karen Taggine. And I know most of them could get here tonight. Have I missed anyone who's here that I didn't call your name on my ISLs? I think that's all of our ISLs. So please join me in giving them a round of applause. So these young ladies are extremely bright. They made it through a lot of interviews and questions, and they are, I think, poised for the work that they're in. So thank you for being a part of my team, and we look forward to the 2016-17 school year. So again, give them a round of applause. I have another group I would like to introduce at this time, and this is a sort of a barrage of positions. I'll start with, we have one mentor coordinator that we hired. We still have a position that's available. I'd like to bring forth Mr. Dave Shields. Dave has earned a bachelor's degree in Business Management, Systems, and Monitoring Communications at Missouri S&amp;T in Raleigh, Missouri. Mr. Shields has most recently served as a mentor in the North County community. Next, I'd like to bring up one of our data strategists, Mr. Ryan Dean. Mr. Dean has served the district as an administrative intern at Griffith Elementary School and as a fourth grade teacher at Coop Valley Elementary School. Our next data strategist is Ms. Collette Edson. Collette is completing her doctoral work in Education Administration at Lindenwood. She holds a master's degree in teaching from Fordham University in New York City, and Ms. Edson has served the district at Ferguson Middle School since 2012. Our last data strategist, Dr. Forbes, is out of the country, couldn't be here tonight, but I do want to introduce him. He's one of ours also. He has a doctorate in Higher Education from Maryville University, a master of arts in history from the University of Missouri at St. Louis. And Dr. Forbes has served the district for 25 years at Ferguson Middle School, McClure, and McClure North, and most recently as a curriculum coordinator for Social Studies and Rural Language. I also would like to bring up at this time our administrative intern. We have one position that we are partnering with the University of Missouri at St. Louis, and that is Mr. Justin Brotherton. If he would join me at this time. Mr. Brotherton earned a bachelor's degree in Elementary Education in 2013 from the University of Missouri at St. Louis. He began his career in education in 2013 and has served as a teacher at Airport Elementary School since 2013. So here are our mentor coordinator, our data strategist, and our administrative intern. Please give them a round of applause. We have a list of assistant principals, and I want to bring each one of them before you this evening, and I'll try to go as quickly as I can. We're really excited about our administrative assistant principals, rather, at the various schools first. Our Assistant Principal at Airport is Ms. Sheila Cars. Ms. Cars comes to Airport with a master's degree in School Administration from Lindenwood and St. Charles and a bachelor's degree in Elementary Education from Southern Illinois University in Carbondale. Ms. Cars began her career in education as a third-grade teacher at Clark Celebrated Academy in St. Louis from the 2000 to 2008 school year. From 2008 to 16, she taught fourth and sixth grade at Johnson-Wabash and at Coop Valley. Ms. Cars is the Ferguson-Floreson School District Teacher of the Year last year, 2016. So excited to have her as an assistant principal. And certainly, I have several, so if you would just hold your applause. I love it when you... I keep up here. You're hard to knock. Give her an applause, isn't it? Absolutely. Our Assistant Principal at Griffith Elementary School is Ms. Carmella Williams. Ms. Williams has a master's in Education from Lindenwood, a bachelor's in Elementary Education from Illinois State, began her career in education in 2003. She began as an English teacher and a reading and intervention specialist at Cross Keys from '08 to 2016. Our Assistant Principal at Johnson-Wabash is Dr. James Allison. Dr. Allison is a graduate of Lindenwood with a doctorate in Educational Instructional Leadership and an educational specialist degree in School Administration. He also has a master's degree in Education and a bachelor's in History. He served the district since 2014 as Assistant Principal at Berkeley Middle School and began his career as a history teacher at Francis Howard School District. He's also an adjunct professor at Lindenwood. Our next AP is at Parker Road, that is Dr. Ingrid McLendon-Carter. Dr. McLendon has a doctorate in Education Administration from Lindenwood as well as a master's degree in Elementary and Secondary Administration. She's also earned a master's degree in Reading from Fontana University. She's served the district for the last 10 years, Dr. Ingrid McLendon-Carter. The Assistant Principal at Robinwood Elementary is Kelly Schneckgoki. Ms. Schneckgoki earned a education specialist degree from Lindenwood, a master's degree from Lindenwood, and also earned a master's degree in Elementary Education from Lindenwood. Ms. Schneckgoki has served our district for 19 years, five as a social studies teacher at Ferguson Middle School and 14 years at Cross Keys. Our next Assistant Principal is at Wallen Grove, Ms. Leslie Bailey. She's a graduate of the University of Missouri at St. Louis and also has an educational specialist degree, a master's degree from Southern Illinois University. She has a bachelor's degree in Secondary Mathematics and a minor in Chemistry. She served our school district from 1996 to '02 as a teacher at McClure North High School, and since 2002, she's served as AP at Cross Keys. Our next Assistant Principal is at Berkeley Middle School, that is Dr. Benjamin I. Dr. I earned a doctorate and educational specialist degree, both from St. Louis University. He earned a master's degree in Teaching from Lindenwood and a bachelor's degree in Political Science from UMSO. Dr. I has served the school district as an industrial technology teacher at Ferguson Middle School from '08 to 16. Our next Assistant Principal is Mr. James LaRue. He earned a master's degree in Education Administration from Lindenwood, a bachelor's degree in Public Policy and Administration, as well as a minor in Political Science from the University of Missouri at UMSO, I'm sorry, at St. Louis, UMSO. Mr. LaRue has served the district as a social studies teacher at Cross Keys from '04 to 16. Our next Assistant Principal at Cross Keys will be Dr. Amanda I. Dr. Amanda I has earned a doctorate in Educational Leadership from St. Louis University and a master's degree in Education from Lindenwood. Dr. I holds a bachelor's degree in Meteorology from St. Louis University. She served the district as a science teacher at McClure South Berkeley from '04 to 2011 and at Cross Keys from 2011 to 2016. Our next Assistant Principal is Mr. Andrew Emmerich. Mr. Emmerich will be serving as the next Assistant Principal at McClure High School. Mr. Emmerich has a master's degree in Ed Administration from Southeast Missouri State University and a bachelor's degree in Education from St. Louis University. He has taught seven years in various capacities since '09, with the last two years in our district at Berkeley Middle School. Next is Mr. David Arlich. He is a graduate of Nova Southeast University with a master's degree in Ed Leadership, a bachelor's degree in Education with a minor in English from Rural College. He currently is pursuing his EDS from Missouri Baptist. Mr. Arlich has served the district since '15. He was previously at McClure High School and will be going over to McClure North, I'm sorry. Prior to joining the school district, he served as an Assistant Principal in the Riverview Gardens for four years. He began his career in education in '97 on the Winnebago Native American Reservation as an English teacher and has taught high school English in Clark County School District as well as in Riverview Gardens School District a total of 16 years. And our last Assistant Principal I'd like to bring forward is our new Assistant Principal at Mark Twain's Community Support Center, and that is Ms. Erica Carrius. Ms. Carrius has a master's degree from Missouri Baptist, a second master's degree from National Lewis University in Illinois, and a Bachelor of Science in Special Ed. She served the students of Ferguson Middle School as a special educator with the SSD since 2010. Board, here are our next slate of assistant principals for our student. Thank you all so much. Thank you all. Those are all of our new assistant principals. Next, I'll bring up... I'll slate of principals for the 2016-17 school year. I'll begin with the principal at Airport Elementary School, Ms. Stacy Price. Ms. Price comes to our district with an educational specialist degree from the University of Missouri at St. Louis. Teaching experience began in '91 and includes teaching seventh grade math and science in U-City, third grade in Normandy, and fifth grade in Riverview Gardens. She has administrative experiences that began in '03 as principal at Granaman and Hazelwood. In '07, she was named the district hearing officer and AP at Riverview Gardens. She became principal at Glasgow in '09 and was named Director of Alternative Education in 2010. We're excited to have her. She's coming to us from the Ritter School District. So this is Ms. Stacy Price, principal of Airport. Our next principal is the principal of Central Elementary School, Mr. Sheldon McAfee. He comes to this position with a master's degree in Ed Administration from UMSO, currently working on his doctoral degree in Ed Leadership at Maryville. Began his teaching career in the Rockwood School District in '07 as a resource teacher. His career in education includes being an assistant principal and principal at the Confluence Charter School from '08 to '14. He served as an instructional support consultant for the Jennings and Riverview Gardens School District, and in '15 joined us as an administrative intern. He's currently the interim principal. We put him there last year at Central and has been named as the principal of Central Elementary, so Mr. Sheldon McAfee. Our next principal is coming to us to Commons Lane, Dr. Heather Carroll. Dr. Carroll received her doctorate in Education from Maryville. She is an eleven-year veteran of our school district, began her career teaching at Wallen Grove in '05. Dr. Carroll has served the district as an elementary teacher, interim assistant principal, instructional coach, new hire and mentor program facilitator, and interim building principal. She currently serves as administrative intern. And so Dr. Heather Carroll will be the next principal of Commons Lane. Our next principal is at Duchesne, that is Dr. Sheila Ward. Dr. Ward comes to this position with a doctorate in Ed Leadership from Maryville. She began her career as a special education teacher in St. Louis Public School in '91. In '94, Dr. Ward became a reading recovery teacher at Wester Grove. She came to the Ferguson-Floreson School District in 1996. And her 20-year service to the district includes reading specialist, summer learning academy instructional coordinator, a reading recovery teacher leader. Dr. Ward currently serves as the coordinator for Communications Arts, Case Six, Libraries, and Prove. Our next principal at Duchesne will be Dr. Sheila Ward. Next, we have Principal at Johnson-Wabash, and that is Ms. Carla Leggett. Ms. Leggett comes to the district with an EDS in School Admin from Lindenwood and St. Louis and is currently seeking her doctorate in Teaching and Learning from Missouri Baptist. From '05 to '09, Ms. Leggett was the academy director and lead teacher at Confluence Academy North. From 2009 to '13, she served as assistant principal and lead teacher in the Jennings School District. She has been employed, most recently, in Riverview Gardens since 2013 as a building principal, I think, at La Masters. So our next principal at Johnson-Wabash will be Ms. Carla Leggett. Our next principal will be at Lee Hamilton, that is Dr. Jill Loyer. Dr. Loyer comes to the district with a doctorate in Ed Leadership from Maryville. She was a Communications Arts and Social Studies teacher at Southwest Middle School in the Parkway School District from '06 to '13. In '13, Dr. Loyer was named Assistant Principal at Southwest Middle School and has served in that capacity until the present time. She is also an adjunct professor at Maryville. Our next principal at Lee Hamilton is Dr. Jill Loyer. At Parker Road, we will have as principal, Ms. Jane Crawford. Ms. Crawford holds an EDS in Ed Leadership from St. Louis University and a master's degree in Education from Truman State. She served the district for 21 years as teacher, assistant principal, dean of students, and most recently was principal at McClure. Our next principal at Parker Road is Ms. Jane Crawford. Principal at Wedgewood would be Dr. Linda Miller. Dr. Miller has earned a doctorate in Ed Leadership from Maryville, a master's degree in Secondary Counseling from UMSO, and a bachelor's and master's degree in Music Education from Southeast Missouri State University. Dr. Miller began her career as a vocal music teacher and has served as a middle school and high school guidance counselor. She has served also as a middle school principal and assistant principal in the Rockwood School District. Most recently, she was principal at Cross Keys. The next principal at Wedgewood will be Dr. Linda Miller. Principal at Cross Keys will be Mr. Christopher Clark. Mr. Clark comes to the district with an EDS from Lindenwood. He has served as director of alternative education, high school assistant principal and dean of students in the Ritter School District, as well as a language arts teacher in Wester Grove. He was an academy coordinator and language arts instructor in the Riverview Gardens District and a teaching fellow and language arts instructor at Columbia Public Schools. Mr. Clark has been at building administration for the past four years. Our next principal at Cross Keys will be Mr. Christopher Clark. And our last principal to join the stage will be principal of McClure High School, Mr. Cedric Gerald. Mr. Gerald is a graduate of Stroud University in Charlotte, North Carolina with a master's degree in Ed Management. He also holds a master's degree in School Administration from the Elizabeth City State University in Elizabeth City, North Carolina. Mr. Gerald's extensive educational career began in 2000 as an English teacher, which includes being an English department chair, English content coach, a facilitator for college board standards and alignment, a graduation project coordinator, and provided job embedded professional development and curriculum development. He has served as a gifted coordinator. In 2015, he became the assistant principal of Plum High School in Plymouth, North Carolina, and in 2016, he was named principal at Plum High School. Our next principal at McClure will be Mr. Cedric Gerald. Here are, Board, your slate of principals for the 2016-17 school year. Thank you all so much.
As I'm sitting down, I want to say thank you to Dr. Davis and his team and all the hard work that has gone into hiring these rock stars, right?
Absolutely.
Right. And I'm seeing such a diversity in all the teams that you have, the people that you hired, in education, gender, race, everything. Just a huge diversity and all, and I think that's going to serve us well.
Absolutely.
So thank you and your team for all the hard work.
Absolutely. But we're not done. We have more.
Okay, now that's just for the...
There you have it. For the school base.
The building. Okay, I'm sorry. I'll wait. I know there's more.
So our assistant director of early education is Ms. Cynthia Wise, and she would join the stage at this time. Ms. Wise is a 16-year veteran in our school district. During the 15-16 school year, she served as early child specialist education process coordinator. She has a master's in Ed Administration from Lindenwood and St. Charles and a bachelor's degree in Psychology from the University of Missouri at Columbia, from Mizzou. So our next assistant director of early ed is Ms. Cynthia Wise. Our SSD director of Special Services is Dr. Tanya Jones Clinton. Dr. Clinton is a graduate of UMSO with a doctorate, PhD in adult and higher education, a master's in Educational Leadership, and a bachelor's degree in Special Education and Elementary Education. She began her career as a special education teacher in 1997 and has served the district since 2007, starting as area coordinator for SSD. Since 15-16 school year, she served in the interim position and now will be the director of Special Education through SSD for Ferguson-Floreson, Dr. Tanya Jones Clinton. Our director of abandoned community engagement is Ms. Michelle Smith. She comes to the district with an EDS from Lindenwood. She's earned a certificate in Elementary and Secondary Ed Administration and completed coursework towards Special Education Certification. She also holds a master's degree in Science in Counseling from UMSO and a bachelor's degree from Harris Stone. Ms. Smith began her career in education in '92 as a junior high school science teacher at Jennings and served as a science teacher at Berkeley Middle School from 1993 to 97. She was an aggressive replacement trainer at the Reentry Center in '97 and was a counselor at the Flossip Berkeley from '97 to 2008. Ms. Smith served as Normandy School District Director of Student and Family Support Services from '08 to '15, and most recently is dean of students in the Jennings School District. Our next director of family and community engagement is Ms. Michelle Smith. Our executive director for Communications and Marketing is Mr. Kevin Hackson, one of our own. He's a 24-year veteran in our school district, having taught English at McClure North for 19 years and five of those years at Cross Keys. In November of 2015, he was approved as the interim director for... Interdirector of Communications and Marketing. And Mr. Hackson holds a master's degree from the University of Missouri at St. Louis. Our next... Yeah, so next will be our executive director for Professional Learning and Leading, and that's Ms. Liz Raymer. She earned a master's degree in School Administration from Williams Woods University and a master's in Elementary Ed from Lindenwood. Ms. Raymer taught in the Wentzville School District from '96 to '01 in St. Charles. And from '06 to '13, she served in various leadership roles in St. Charles School District. She has three years in our district. She was principal of Wedgewood Elementary School for the past three years. She will be our next executive director for Professional Learning and Leadership. It's Liz Raymer. Our assistant superintendent for Research, Accountability, and Technology is Dr. Farhad Jidali. He comes to the position with a doctorate, PhD from Iowa State, has been in education since 1997, and served as assistant superintendent for Technology Evaluation and Research for the past 16 years with our school district. Dr. Farhad Jidali, our assistant superintendent for Research, Accountability, and Technology. Our assistant superintendent for Human Resources is Attorney Philip Bowden. Attorney Bowden comes to this position with a Juris Doctorate from the University of Illinois in Champaign. Attorney Bowden is currently a doctoral education candidate at UMSO with a projected referral date of spring of 2017. He began his education career as a care team director in the Normandy School District in January of 2012 and was named his chief administrative officer in 2012. In '13, he became assistant superintendent of Support Services, I'm sorry, Support and Resources, as well as assistant superintendent of Support Innovation for the Jennings School District. Our next assistant superintendent for Human Resources is Attorney Philip Bowden. Assistant Superintendent for Business Services is Laura Medrusik. Ms. Medrusik comes to this position with a bachelor's degree in Business Management and Administrative Services from Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville. She has 25 years in the district, during which time she began her... began and served as director of, rather, Finance and Business Services, or Business Manager, I'm sorry, Laura. And from '92 until 2013, she became the chief financial officer. So our next assistant superintendent for Business Services is Ms. Laura Medrusik. Couple more. Assistant Superintendent for Alternative Education, Mr. Gary Beals. Mr. Beals comes to this position with an EDS from Lindenwood. He came to our district in '92 with a social studies teacher and history teacher. He was an assistant principal at Ferguson Middle School and at McClure North High School from '02 to '04. Mr. Beals became the director of the Mark Twain Center in '04 and became director of Community and Parent Engagement in 2011. He currently serves as the district hearing officer. In addition, he has served as a state-appointed school board member for the Wilson School District from '05 to '08. Mr. Gary Beals, our next assistant superintendent for Alternative Education. Assistant Superintendent for Instruction is Dr. Adrian Blain. Dr. Blain comes with a doctorate from Lindenwood. She was a teacher from '95 to 2000, assistant principal in 2000. In 2003, she became a building principal at Combs and served in that capacity from 2003 until 2013. She has served as executive director for elementary education since January of 2014, Dr. Adrian Blain. Also, assistant superintendent Lisa Hazel, Dr. Lisa Hazel. She comes to this position with a doctorate in Ed Leadership from Maryville. She served as a teacher with SSD from '92 to '97 and came to our district in '97 as a teacher at Hall's Ferry Elementary School. And from '01 until '04, she served as an instructional specialist. She then served as principal of Hall's Ferry from '04 until 2015, at which time she became the executive director for elementary education. Our next assistant superintendent... Our next assistant superintendent is Dr. Lisa Hazel. And our last assistant superintendent is, uh, Ms. Deanna Kitson. Uh, Ms. Kitson comes to us, uh, with an educational specialist degree from Missouri Baptist. Uh, she has served as a kindergarten teacher in Winfield and as a first grade teacher and assistant principal and principal all in Winfield. Uh, she's been a building administrator for the past eleven years, uh, also served as, uh, serves rather as an adjunct professor at Missouri Baptist and also at Lindenwood. Uh, she is currently enrolled in a doctoral program in ed leadership at Maryville and expected to complete her doctorate in twenty seventeen as well. So, here are our next slate of assistant superintendents for the Ferguson-Floreson School District. Give them a round of applause. And then I'll get over there. And finally, uh, I'd like to bring to the stage, uh, our two deputy superintendents. Um, first, I'll bring up our deputy superintendent of, uh, instructional services is Dr. Exley Warren. Uh, Dr. Warren comes to this position with a doctorate in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Uh, he, uh, has experience, uh, in post-op studies, uh, in, in the art of leadership at Harvard University. Uh, his background includes having taught, uh, been an associate principal and principal, a district administrator and instructional support leader in Chicago, uh, as well as principal in Chattanooga, Tennessee. Our next deputy superintendent for instructional services, Dr. Exley Warren. And finally, last but not at all least, deputy superintendent of operational services, attorney Larry Leroux. He comes to the position with a juris doctorate from St. Louis University, uh, and continuing legal education courses related to school hall negotiations and employment management. Uh, Dr. Leroux, attorney Leroux has twenty-nine years, uh, in education and the last eight years serving, uh, the district in various capacities, uh, and most recently is interim superintendent. Our next two deputy superintendents of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. Please give them a round of applause.
Remember what I said about the building level administrators? Ditto for. Congratulations to all of you and welcome to the district in your new positions. At this time, we're going to have our Missouri School Board Association update. And this portion of the meeting has been allocated to show a sharp video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of special interest to our board members and also to the community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of July. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at efforts to ensure all students in Missouri's public schools have access to excellent teachers in every subject. That can be a challenge, especially in high poverty, high minority, and some rural school districts. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has developed a map showing teacher shortage areas in counties throughout the state. Commissioner of Education, Dr. Margie Van Diven, told an audience at MSBA's recent Leadership Summit, "It's important to find ways to fill the gaps."
And when you look, some of it's clustered. So, if you need a Spanish teacher in northeastern Illinois, okay, you'll see that there are, there are clusters of red on the map for different counties. So, how do we use some of these tools that we have to share some of these resources, to share teachers? That's thinking outside of the box, but maybe you could do, uh, you could do distance learning for one school here and one school the next day and then be in the district, in the various districts. That's you all sharing your resources. It gets a little messy, but I think it's the way that we need to head if we're really going to try to solve some of these and, and get the best in front of all of our kids.
A shortage is defined as a student having a twenty percent or greater chance of being taught by an underqualified teacher in a given subject area. There are currently sixteen counties that lack qualified teachers in at least ten certification areas. Another forty-three counties lack qualified teachers in five to nine subjects. Missouri was one of the first states to be recognized by the U.S. Department of Education for its plan to address educator equity. The new president of the Missouri School Boards Association is Larry Felton, a school board member in the Melville School District in St. Louis County. Felton became MSBA president at the conclusion of the two thousand sixteen Leadership Summit held last month at the Lake of the Ozarks. He told an audience at the Leadership Summit, "Now is an important time to be a local school board member."
But in the seven years I've had a chance to serve on the board, meet all of you, um, serve as an officer, I look at the level of commitment and leadership I see out of the board, local boards, the regional meetings I go to, the, the people that do the presentations. I have never seen this level of leadership and skill in all this time. So, I have no reason to think it's not going to, it can't help but get better. Our challenge is our collective challenge is to focus the leadership and energy that we have to solve those problems and move forward.
Other state officers elected at the delegate assembly meeting held during the Leadership Summit include President-elect Jan Neese of the Columbia Board of Education and Vice President Mike Pratt of the Gaskinade County R One Board of Education in Herman. MSBA presented individual board members with awards for achieving various certification levels during the Leadership Summit, including the first-ever distinguished certification awards. Twelve school boards were recognized as outstanding boards of education for two thousand sixteen, and sixteen school boards achieved MSBA's Governance Team Award. Besides electing officers, the delegate assembly took the first step toward combining MSBA's advocacy documents into a single document that clearly states the association's positions on issues related to public education in Missouri. The bylaws changes approved by the delegate assembly will allow the MSBA Advocacy Committee and Executive Committee to begin the work of combining the association's legislative resolutions, platform statements, and the Missouri Public Education Vision Project document. Registration for the two thousand sixteen MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators is now open. This year's event is scheduled for September twenty-ninth through October second at the Lake of the Ozarks. We'll have another outstanding lineup of keynote speakers and more than one hundred breakout sessions, all designed to improve the leadership skills of school board members and administrators. You can register for the annual conference on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
I do want to, uh, let you all know that we were one of the twelve districts that won a Governance Award, which you were so. Kudos to our. At this time, this portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and the community. Um, our first person is Scott Ebergen, as you have noticed, his seat is not, uh, occupied. He is out with a family, um, uh, broke with his family, so he did not make the meeting today. So, we will start with Mr. Brown.
Well, is this, uh, yeah. I'm recently back on the board and I haven't really had an opportunity yet, uh, meeting with, uh, Mr. Beals, and we've discussed that today. So, I'm going to forego this report until our next board meeting in a, a few days from now, so we'll have something to say.
Ms. Harge?
Good evening. The district has continued to engage stakeholders in the community in a variety of ways, and I'd like to share just a few. First, I had a great time participating in the Fourth of July Parade in Ferguson. That was my first time participating in the parade as a member of the board, the board. And it was exciting to see the support from the community, and we had a good turnout despite the low rain we had. Throughout the summer, district has offered at no cost to participants free meals and access to libraries at several of our locations. This effort will continue through the end of the week. Finally, we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting at Berkeley Middle School this Friday and the upcoming Back to School Fair on Saturday, August sixth, here at the Administration Center. Details are on the website, but the fun will start with a one-mile color run at eight-thirty, then yoga, and after that, the fair itself will run from ten to one. There will be lots of great activities and performances. The day will wrap up with a parent event at the YMCA. You can find more information about this on our website and social media. And I hope everyone has had an enjoyable summer so far and am looking forward to starting our twenty sixteen-seventeen school year. I know I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Graves.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my portion of course is student achievement. Um, over the summer, uh, the school district participated in a summer reading challenge, which motivated students to read books and experience success with reading. Each week, our students were offered an exciting theme and fun activities. Students were able to visit school libraries, check out books, and take quizzes on books they've read. Every student who met his or her reading goal earned a pass to the Ferguson-Floreson Literacy Festival. In addition, statewide testing results will be coming soon. End of, end of the course individual school reports for high schools will be sent home with their end of the, hi, end of the year high school report cards. And then grade level assessments, those scores will be sent out, um, September thirtieth. So, uh, look forward to seeing our results as a school district as we push forward.
Thank you, Dr. Graves. Mr. Shabon?
My portion, my portion of the strategic plan is, uh, processes and infrastructure. Uh, last, uh, month's meeting, I provided an extensive list of what facilities is working on throughout the summer. Uh, they'll continue working on those. Uh, we're moving into, uh, phase two of our security, um, and safety protocols, uh, with the build outs of the entries. Uh, so we'll have a, I'll have a better report for you, um, at our August meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shabon. Ms. Harge said.
I'll repeat, good evening. It seems to go down the line. Uh, I am on the talent portion of the strategic plan, and I think my report has already been given. We have a lot of new hires, and, uh, we've got several teachers too that weren't introduced tonight. We've been very busy with hiring, so thank you again, Dr. Davis.
For me, let's see, I want to say first of all, uh, congratulations to Ms. Harge for being selected as the youth of, being selected to be on the Youth Advisory Commission by, uh, Mayor Schneider. So, congratulations to her. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Courtney, Dr. Courtney Graves, uh, who is going to be presenting as a Missouri School Board Association, uh, uh, convention in September. So, congratulations to you. Um, also, I want to say to Courtney, um, uh, extend our condolences to her and from the board. Uh, Courtney is the cousin of Philando Castile, and, uh, she unfortunately had to be a part of the funeral services for him. So, we just wanted to say, um, that we love you and, uh, our prayers are with you and the family. Okay? And also, I want to say I had the, oh, just the privilege, I want to say thank you to the board for allowing me to be a part of the Harvard experience. Uh, I went to Harvard with a team, a team of eight of us, and they worked us like, oh, my gosh. You know what? I took one for the team. I just want you all to know. Every night, homework, homework, reading, sixty to eighty pages a night, not quite that much, but, but quite a bit. And the expectation in the classroom, very high, uh, we needed to be prepared uh, to, to go into the classrooms and to, the professors did not ask you to raise your hand. They just came and your name was, it was in front of you, and then you come, well, that pays. And you think about the case on, we did a lot of case studies, so we had to be prepared. It made me think about our students and, and what they go through every single day. And we as adults, adults complained about sitting for, what, eight hours in a classroom and listening to someone speak. But what I liked about this class is that it was so interactive and that we got a chance to share and, um, to express our feelings or our, about certain case studies that we had. So, it was a wonderful experience, and I hope that every board member gets an opportunity to do this Harvard thing. I want to say that thank you again to Dr. Davis for getting a grant for us to go, uh, to this, this Harvard experience. It's something I will never, ever forget, and we looked at the problem of practice in our district. Uh, our, our problem with practice was discipline, because that seemed to be one of the, the, the hot button items in our, in our district, and we worked on that. We will be sharing with you, uh, in the future, what we came up with, uh, with our problem of practice and, uh, how we, uh, some of the, uh, strategies and, um, ideas that came out of our Harvard experience. Uh, what the people who are, are part of PEL stand so that we can, so that everyone will know who went. Yes, these are our, these are our PEL, these are our HAWA, but graduates. Okay, um, also, we had the opportunity to do a retreat this past, uh, weekend, uh, with the board, and again, our transition team that Dr. Davis has set up from, um, his, uh, I know, HAWA. Uh, so, to come in and to, uh, pro bono to help us with getting our goals written. Uh, we were able to, to get that done this weekend, our goals for our board as well as our goals for Dr. Davis, so that we can evaluate him. Yeah, real soon. So, again, we had a retreat this weekend, and we've just been doing a lot of work. Um, and that's it for, for me, Dr. Davis.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Thurman, and to the entire board. We have really been busy. Um, and every person who went to PEL, uh, at Harvard did get a certificate, so they are graduates, are being first. And I hope they frame those, because you worked for it. They didn't just, you worked for it. I can tell you that, uh, I felt like I was back in school because of the long work we did. Um, and I've also been invited to come back, uh, in September at no cost to the district. I always like to say that because that's important, uh, because most of these things have been minimal cost and they're, although the Harvard was, you know, fifty percent of that cost, uh, the district took care of. Uh, but they do a case on Ferguson every year, and I went last year and spoke. Uh, they, uh, Dr. Monica Higgins, who was a professor in the Harvard Business School, is now a professor in the Ed School, uh, the Graduate School of Education. And so, uh, she's invited me to come back in September, uh, to speak. When we were there, we had several cases. They do case study teaching, um, and they, so Ferguson is one of their cases, right? And so, uh, they've invited me to come to be a guest speaker with, uh, that case being talked at the end of September, I think it is. Uh, but we had the experience of talking to a lot of people around the country. I say that because there's so much going on around this country, uh, and it's really, really important for us to be a part of this, this shift in educating all children. Uh, children of color, uh, children who are white, children who are Asian, all children need to be educated at very, very high levels. Uh, and there's some amazing things going on around this country that we were able to partake in there, and, uh, we will continue to be a part of, uh, learning, that learning community. Uh, I do want to say, uh, at this time, though, I want to take a chance, because I did introduce quite a few people a moment ago. Uh, I want to ask all of our teachers who are here with us this evening to at least stand, because I never want to minimize, because you are the rock, uh, the cornerstone. I feel like the ones who make it happen, and anybody who's in meetings with me knows that I always say how important teachers are, because they are the ones who take care of our children, and they're the ones who make it happen in that instructional forward. And in that instructional board, students, teachers, and content, that's where all of our resources need to be focused at. We've been busy, quite busy this summer. We started with our Summer Institute and Wash U as soon as school was out, from June 1st through the 9th. We have had, even today, we had our All Administrators Meeting, so we were at the Total Reserve Building all day today with all administrators in our district. We had Lexile Training at the SSD Building. We just have been extremely busy preparing for the 16-17 school year. You know, it would be so nice if you could just do all that work and put it uphill and give it to everybody, and then everything just works out well, right? It doesn't work that way. It's constant learning, and it's a recursive process. And so, I'm really excited that they have really smart people on board who are excited about the work, and I think that's really what's important, is that we have people who believe in children, all children, who believe that they can learn at very high levels, and who take time with children like me, who are first generation, and who come from homes that wouldn't have had another opportunity, had teachers not educated them well. And so, that is what I am really, really excited about. We start school, this is the last meeting before the first day of school. Our next meeting is on the first day of school, but it will be certainly after school has already concluded for the day. Our first day of school is August 10th, and our children are, I've been super excited with all the things we've had going on this summer. Even with our sixth grade, fourth students, we just had all of them, or many of them, rather, in the boardroom. They've been here since six o'clock, and I think it's concluded, because it seems the board should come through. They were, we met with those parents and students who will be in that program starting next year, Dr. Blain, and just the excitement that's in the air, of the learning and the possibilities for them and all of our children. So, I'm just excited and grateful to be a part of this team. So, thank you for, board, for the opportunity. That is my report.
This portion of the meeting is for our public comments. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed three minutes to speak. The time will be on the screens, and we will stick to our three-minute time limit. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and in keeping with District Policy 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to the speakers during the public comment period, the board president will make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session, or we will have our attorney standing, arms to the head, who is present in our front row. At this time, do we have anyone who wants to make our public comments? I have cards here. Let's start with Mr. Clark.
Yes, I'm Jim Clark, live in the district, was a board member for about three years, more or less. I have heard rumors that you're going to be hiring a person that was a former board member that resigned from the board recently.
You're on board, Mr. Clark?
Excuse me?
That is personally identifiable, comment, you're on board.
Okay. I'm disappointed if that's the board's decision.
Our next person is Carolyn Randazzo on Discipline.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Randazzo, I'm the 1042 South Harvard at Ferguson, and I'm a member of the community and also involved with Metropolitan Congregation United. I've spoken to several of you, and I also want to express my thanks to Mr. Beals and Ms. Smith. We had a very good meeting this week talking again about out-of-school suspension and eliminating that as a discipline practice in our district. We, I've talked before about that Missouri is number one in the country in the number of out-of-school suspensions our kids receive. And so, we know that that's not really an effective strategy any longer for our children, and we need to have some other strategies. And I'm so glad to hear that that was a problem of practice at Harvard, and I can't wait to hear more about that. So, I urge you to continue to look at that, to really get on board with eliminating out-of-school suspensions, especially for our youngest students. We have, we are working through NCU with all the districts in Second City County and St. Charles County about adopting that ban on the suspensions. And I want to be able to say that my Ferguson-Ferguson district, that I'm a graduate of, and Cotton's district is a part of that, that we won't suspend our kids any longer. It'd be really great, you know, since we have this reputation for being number one, and some people don't want to be number one, to be able to say, okay, we're not doing that anymore, we're a great metropolitan, Second City area. So, I hope you'll continue that, I know you will, if you're turning a part of, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Matruzic, Ms. Matruzic? Are there any other cards?
I'll give you one out. It's on the table.
I'm glad I asked.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Laura Matruzic, and I'm an administrator here at the district, and I just wanted to elaborate on the Back to School Fair. We are trying to create a culture of wellness for next year, and this past year, we had a, we have a five-year grant from the Missouri Foundation for Health, and we have Wellness Champions, and we have funds for this grant. And so, we have used our funds for the grant this year to help kick off our culture of wellness for this year. So, with the, I just wanted to let the public know that we're very excited, we're going to have a one-mile fun run walk. It's going to start at the 4 North at 8:30. Registration starts at 8:00. There will be a hundred, there will be 125 free t-shirts for people to wear when they get there. They put them on, and as they run or walk around our complex, we'll throw a color on them, and they'll be all colors when they come back. So, that's the way we're going to have everybody run back to school, we're very excited about that. I also wanted to let everybody know, after that, we will have yoga in the annex, so that everybody can cool down and relax, and then the fair will begin after that. We also will have, the funds from this foundation are paid for a parent, a parent night, so that parents can go to the Emerson YMCA. The Emerson YMCA is our partner in this grant, and there will be a parent fun event at the Emerson YMCA from 8 until midnight. We're trying to create more parent involvement, and so we just want to ask that our parents come to that and enjoy the evening with our children. And also, if you participate in the fun run, the yoga, and we will have five tables spread out throughout the fair, that are, you'll have some kind of interactive, something about nutrition, or something about wellness. If you do all of those different things, parents will do that with their children, and they will get their name put in a drawing for our free crock pots. We'll have a couple of crock pots that we're going to be giving away, and also, we will have water bottles for all of the students. There's going to be punch cards. So, if you come with all your punch cards punched, then you'll get a free water bottle for your student, and they can use that for the year. So, we just wanted to let you know we're kicking off your wellness, and I wanted to make sure that we promote that to the public. Thank you.
Last call for, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board. Hello? Good evening, Board. Ms. Hawke, I'm a resident of the, Ms. Hawke, I know I'm not supposed to represent this, but you had mentioned to me and Jim, and I know that they're doing the open house at the middle school on Friday. You told me that I would have a person on tour with you. I like that, that you were Friday, if possible. So, you can have a tour of the middle school and go over that.
Here.
Okay. And just give me a call, they have my number.
Okay, that concludes our public comments section. At this time, we will have a 10-minute recess, and we will come back at 8:00. Welcome back, and it is now time for a seat at, Rob, come back. The consent agenda. The administration presents the following items for approval under the consent agenda. I'm talking slow so we can get into this soon. Disbursements, payroll, teacher, non-teacher, thirteen million, seventy thousand, eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Operational disbursements, four million, two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents for a grant total of seventeen million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. All those in agreement with accepting the consent agenda? Your eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? Under group, curriculum and instruction, Strategic Plan 2.0. Dr. Davis will be presenting this.
Yes, Stan is going to put up the, oh, it's already going to pause. So, we had our board retreat this past weekend, and we talked about some of the revisions to the strategic plan, and as a result of that, our board work plan will be updated before presenting a full-scale revision of the strategic plan to, strategic plan 2.0. However, I want to present to the board just sort of a tightening, even more so, of our reorganization of the school district. Back in February, I presented to the board a reorganization plan, which I presented most of those people in that plan to this evening. What I'd like to do is to do just a little, make it a little bit tighter when it comes to our realignment, to increase accountability and focus our services in our schools and to align our support, so that we really narrowly focus on our students, and make sure that the disconnect between levels becomes connected. So, what I'm asking the board to do is to take a look at, we had assistant superintendent, two assistant superintendents for elementary, and then one for secondary. In the advent of the interviews and looking at different people, what I found was that there's still a disconnect between what goes on in elementary school and then when transfers to high school. I'd like to tighten it just a little bit more and provide you with a proposal of having still the same positions, the positions won't change, just the titles and the work of the people that they will, the people that we'll be working with. So, we will have our schools aligned by feeder patterns. And so, if you can go back to the other slide, Kevin.
You want the old version?
Yes, exactly.
Sorry.
So, what we have in front of you is a feeder pattern slide. We want all of our schools to be aligned by feeder pattern, and so we have three areas. Instead of having elementary schools and then secondary schools, I'd like to have Area 1 being McClure, South Berkeley, and all of the schools that feed into McClure, South Berkeley will be in Area 1. Area 2 would be McClure, and all the schools that feed into McClure will be Area 2. Area 3 would be McClure, North. And so, the assistant superintendents would supervise the principals and the schools in feeder patterns. In Area 1, I want to put Ms. Diana Kitson over that area. She would supervise McClure, South Berkeley, Berkeley, and all the schools that feed into Berkeley and the high school. Area 2 would be Dr. Hazel, she would supervise McClure, Ferguson Middle, and all the elementary schools that feed into that. And then in Area 3, we would have Dr. Blain, she would supervise McClure, North, as well as Cross Keys and all the elementary schools that feed into that. In addition to that realignment, we would have a data strategist assigned to each one of those areas. I haven't had a chance to talk with the data strategist one-on-one, but in Area 1, we would have, with McClure, South Berkeley, and Ms. Kitson, Mr. Ryan Dean. In Area 2, for McClure, we would have Ms. Collette Edson, and in Area 3, with Dr. Blain, we would have Dr. Forbes. And so, they would work as a team with those schools. So, with children at kindergarten, they would follow them all the way through high school to graduation. That way, there will be some continuity. One of the things I talked about today in our All Administrators Meetings, one of the metrics that we will focus on, and we had this conversation in our retreat, was, you know, the graduation rate, and how our students are articulated, being on, reading on grade level by the end of third grade, and then moving all the way through to high school and graduating in four years. I don't want students graduating in five years, unless they're getting a junior degree with their early college plan that we're putting in place, and that will come forth later. But we want children coming to us and really a pre-K, because we have an early age plan we're working on as well, so that when they get to us, we can follow them all the way through. And our data strategist will have that data and be able to focus on those students all the way through, and not be all over the district, so that we can narrowly focus our resources. What you'll find, when you look at the data, is that most of our focus schools are in the McClure feeder pattern. We have, and our priority schools are in the South Berkeley feeder pattern. So, we need to be really intentional and strategic about where we put our resources, in what classrooms, how we support our principals, and how our assistant superintendents deliver that service to those schools every day. So, my recommendation to you, and I'd like for you to approve, reorganizing so that our school district is organized by areas. Area 1 would be McClure, South Berkeley, and all the schools that feed into that. Area 2 would be McClure, and all the schools that feed into that. And Area 3 would be North. Ms. Kitson would be Area 1, Dr. Hazel, Area 2, and Dr. Blain in Area 3. Any questions?
I move that we accept the Strategic Plan 2.0. Second? Been moved by Mr. Chabot, and second by Mr. Brown to accept Strategic Plan 2.0. Time for discussion.
Wow. I mean, this is, this is a big step, and I'm very impressed, because, you know, it seems like we're pretty focused, and I like that. Is this thing on?
Can you?
Okay. Yeah, Dr. Davis, we've been, of course, this has been a conversation, and I just, you know, Rob's wow is really a big capital W, L, W, because, I mean, we are just absolutely ecstatic in the manner in which we're beginning to move, and thank you.
Can you explain a little bit to those who may not understand what the yellow and the...
Yes, ma'am. So, the yellow schools, so DSC gives a report every year of the schools that are low performing. And the yellow schools are our focus schools, and our focus schools, I'm sorry, yeah, our focus schools, well, actually, let me look at the pink ones first. The pink ones are our priority schools. The priority schools are the lowest-performing 5% of schools in our state, and so our schools, we have two schools that are in that, in that range. So, if they look at all the schools in the state, and the lowest 5%, those performing in the lowest of 5%, 5% of the state, get called priority schools, and then we begin to certainly put resources and figure out how to move those schools out of that zone. The next level, which is not as low, but still down there, are our focus schools. We have two schools that are priority schools, that's Berkeley Middle School and Airport, and then we have seven schools that are focus schools. Now, we have had some schools, for example, Duchesne, who are, who's in the 75% range, but you have to consistently show progress, not just one year or two, it's almost like a three-year pattern and on and on, that you not only just have one rock star, if you will, but you're consistently showing gains in student performance, particularly in those areas by reading, which is why reading has been our focus and will remain our focus. Our Lexile Training, for example, we had, I found it a few ago, over SSD, we have all of our administrators there. We need to be clear about who the children are, all of them, and especially making sure we get our children reading on grade level by the end of third grade. Now, that, you know, is really focusing on our lower ones, K2, about how they get to third grade or reading, so about the ones who are already in third grade or beyond. And Lexile gives us a metric, one of many, a metric, the only one really that goes all the way to college, so that we can focus on, if a child's in sixth grade, for example, and by sixth grade, they ought to be around a 900 Lexile level. And if they're not, then what do we do to get them there, right? And to me, that's the recipe. We have summer reading that we've had this summer, that we've been talking about. Our children have to read in order to improve reading, period, but they need to be reading things that challenges them where they are. They don't just need to read a book. It could be a book, and maybe a thousand Lexile, they're reading a 500 Lexile book. That doesn't challenge them, so they're not really growing. We need to make sure that we know where their level is, and then put books in front of them that they're interested in, so we can grow them. And then they have to read all the time. My recommendation to the schools is that students read at least an hour a day, at least an hour a day. I'm personally just finishing up my son, and I read all the time, and my son does. We have to create a culture in our community of reading, so that our children move up. And so, we've got to get our schools out of that bottom, and we feel like reading comprehension is the area, that if they do that well, they'll do better in math, they'll do better do better in math, they'll do better in science, in all, all sorts of areas. But the pink means priority, lowest 5%, and the yellow is focus, lowest 10%. And our goal is to have zero students in, zero schools in, I don't think any of those areas, and 0% of our students in below basic. That happened overnight, but I think we have gotten strategically and intentionally focused on providing support where it's needed.
With the new scores coming out, do you think that any of the schools will be moving or changing?
You know, over time, and, I mean, you...
I'm saying like, what's the next school you're...
Yeah, so, so, so we don't have any, I, I feel good, because I know people have been working hard.
Okay.
And I can tell you, and Dr. DeDawes can probably support this in some way, we have some unofficial results from high school data, EOCs, and that looks better, okay? Science, not so much, but Dr. Van Devene sent out an email about a week or so ago about an issue with recalibration of the biology text. And so we're expecting for that to be recalibrated by the state from some of their psychonatricians, and then we'll get some different results August 15th. So high schools look a little bit better. I don't like to celebrate until we know for sure, and then, then we can continue to move forward. Don't know or have any indications yet of our EOGs, which are Dr. recreate Math, Sci, Math Science, and ELS. What I can tell you is that principals have been getting narrowly focused in their work from just this past year, and will be even more so this year. That's one of the reasons we want to do feeder patterns, so that we can be focused in on the students that feed into this high school, what's happening with them down here, and we can stay here and really get essentially focused on what those needs are. Because we're seeing patterns, right? And most of the patterns are that schools that are performing lower on the southern part of our district, Ferguson, Cool Valley, that area. Oh, we have some schools by Cool Valley and Holman that are doing well, and, and, and in the 90, 100% range. We still have a lot of, a lot of work to do. So I'm hopeful, but, you know, I don't ever let that count anything until I can see it in front of you.
Dr. Davis, you mentioned the science has been just a little bit, not quite where you, it wasn't starting to rise as well.
Well, so what happened was...
How are you going to, my question really would be this, how, what kind of strategy, and I'm really putting you on the spot.
Sure.
What kind of strategy in that particular area would you come up with to, to, to attack that problem?
Yes, yes. So first, you've got to be clear about the data, right, and getting clear about where your student deficiencies are. So you've got to be clear about the standards set, right? What we have found, and we did some work even this past week, when we had our review with ELC, and we're focused on our graduate release, and really about our whole balance literacy approach. What we have found, though, is that when we look at all of our standards across the board, reading comprehension is one of those things that emerge in every area. In fact, we took, took a look at a priority standard for example, and students being able to read text and understand the sort of centrality or meaning of text, and be able to, you know, use the text to support, create an argument, and then use the text as a portion of an evidence. Well, reading comprehension goes throughout everything, right? And, and science in particular. And so when students have this skill of reading, and we use post-reading as a powerful practice, and that's reading it first time, co-read, reading it a second time, and, you know, using some attack strategies to really understand the meaning of the text they're reading. And so using strategies like that in every area, science, and I'm a math teacher, and math as well, so that when students read anything, they get a deeper meaning and understanding of what they read, and then they take that understanding and apply it in a real-world situation, right? And so if we improve reading comprehension, then what we believe and research supports that our kids will, our children will show improvements in all areas. And so science in particular, you know, science is certainly, I'm not as passionate about science as about math, however, you know, science, technology, engineering, and math is the wave of the future, right? Our children have to have those skills. Hence our STEM, STEM school, and making sure our children have those requisite skills, those foundational skills. And so reading comprehension, I guess, in a word, or two words, reading comprehension. If we can improve that skill set in all the heads of our children, then we believe that it'll improve scores, period, because they will learn in, in, in deeper ways, and be able to make the meaning of what they read. And be able to discuss it intelligently. And here's what we want. Our four-year plan, what we want is a child, any child, you pick them out of a group of, you know, 11,000, and any child graduates from our school, we want them to be able to craft an argument verbally and in writing, and be able to take a position from their, in their argument, rather than have a position, and be able to argue their position, and use evidence from, you know, text that they read to support why they stand where they want to assert their argument. So if we can create the kind of child what we have in front of us, that's someone who can not only read well and write well, but speaks well, listens well, all those standards, we knock them all out, and we create the kind of child that I think our community can benefit from, and our education system certainly will. I said this today when we were talking about, you know, this whole notion of improving in our school districts is economically, education to me is the best economic goal. If we improve our public schools, we're going to improve so much more in our school district, right? And so we have to be really intentional around our focus and where we put our resources. Everything has to go in that classroom, science classes, we need to stay within our labs. Our children go to college, they ought to have experiences, not just knowing how to, you know, bowl water on a bus and burner, but be able to dissect, you know, you know, different pieces of text and, and animals, if you will, so that when they go to college, they have the kinds of experiences that gets them ready to go to Mizzou, or to go to Harvard. And that's what we want, in every area, science, particularly math, because I'm passionate there, but all the areas.
Any other questions? All right, let's, you ready for the vote? All those in favor of accepting Strategic Plan 2.0? Any? Any opposed? The ayes have it? It passes. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Science Inquirer kit, Eric Henry. Oh, so you go ahead and... Hi, Eric, how are you?
Good evening, Board, from this friend who sent me up from this, this part. The MYSI supplemental kits have been purchased for the past two years for fifth and sixth grade classrooms. Positive growth has been seen in classrooms as a result from the pre and post-test study. MYSI aligns with both Missouri learning standards and our Ferguson Forest curriculum in both content and inquiry. MYSI kits supplement and enhance the science learning experience for our students. The activities are engaging, they support ELS and math, reading, writing, and graphing as well. By providing these supplemental materials and equipment in inventory activities for our fourth and fifth grade classrooms, we hope to continue the hands-on experiences for our students. Three minutes for each grade level of fourth and fifth grade is requested. We are asking the Board to approve the purchase of MYSI supplemental materials for fourth and fifth grade classrooms in the amount of $46,205.
I move that we purchase the Science Inquirer kits. It's been moved by Mr. Chabot, and second by Ms. Hawke. Dr. Graves, to purchase the Science Inquirer kit. Any discussion? No discussion?
Well, I mean, my answer, I'm waiting for them. I have my same question as always, will it be going to all schools?
Yes, all fifth, fourth and fifth graders, and fifth grade is the elementary level that is, we are testing science.
Okay, ready for the vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it? It passes. Professional Development Report.
This year, the district's professional development committee has accomplished much. The attached report summarizes that work. Highlights of the report include the continued development of professional programs for teachers, improvement of the new teacher orientation and training, further alignment of the work of the PDC to support the district's strategic and comprehensive school improvement plans, increased cohesion and teacher representation within the committee, and more collaboration with administration. The PDC is comprised of teachers from each building, an FFNEA representative, a principal representative from each level, and a board member. The committee is guided by the executive team. Committee met for four full days this past year to accomplish their work. The work of the PDC is directed by local, state, and federal requirements. The district's report is also the 2016-17 proposed budget in the amount of $478,025. I would ask that we pay close attention, or closer attention, to the Ferguson Forest School District Professional Development Plan for 2015 to 2020. That's where we have our data represented on, on our PDC report, and that starts on page 11. And then also the professional development days for 2016-17, which starts on page 205 in the report, and Appendix G, the 2016-17 budget, where it details that out.
I have a motion.
I would like to have a report.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Hawke, and second by Mr. Chabot, to accept the Professional Development Report. Any discussion? Good job. All those in favor? Any opposed? It passes. And at this time, we need to go back to the consent agenda, because I think I skipped getting a motion and a second on that agenda item.
I would like to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Ms. Hawke, and second by Ms. Hart, to accept the consent agenda. Are we correct now? All right. Okay. Oh, that's, you didn't, you didn't vote again. Okay, let's make a connection. All those in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it? It passes. Again. Okay. Oh, whoa. It's a German time, I thought we had one right, but you all want to say. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn our meeting. I would like to entertain a motion to close the, the meeting. I can't. I have a motion. That we adjourn? Any second? It's been moved by Mr. Chabot, and second by Dr. Graves. To adjourn, at this time, we are adjourned.
You can't wait. All in favor now?
Any opposed?